...meeting of the Chavano Park City Council to order. We have a special evening this evening because we have so many Roadrunners in the house. We're very excited to have each and every one of them. We're about ready to kick off a new season for athletics at UTSA. We'll go with football, soccer, basketball, softball, volleyball, yes volleyball. So, we're really excited about that. If you would please join Maggie and the Pledge of Allegiance to be followed by Buddy will lead us in the invocation. If you all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious God, we thank you for this opportunity to call people together in support of our community. We thank for each and everyone who is present here today. You have blessed us with supportive stewards who seek what's best for the community of Chavano Park, and we thank you most for being here in our midst. Dear God, help us supply your wisdom as we decide on certain matters today. Let your presence be made known and lead us through the decisions we make today. This we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Bill, are there citizens be heard? Okay, brings us to item number three, citizens be heard. Sean Fitzpatrick, Sean if you'd give us your name and where you live. Okay, you certainly will have every opportunity to speak at the public hearing. Okay, there being no citizens be heard, brings us to item number four, City Council comments. Lee.
Welcome to everybody, this is the largest crowd of this age I've ever seen that wasn't doing this. It's refreshing and thank you, thank you for what you are and thank you for what you will become. Good citizens, thank you.
Pete.
Yeah, just welcome, it's just great to have so many Roadrunners here in our house.
Conrad.
Yeah, echo those, thank you. Good to see a lot of people in here and to echo Lee, thank you for what you do. Sometimes it's not that fun, sometimes it's a lot of fun. We recognize that.
Maggie.
It's really great to see everyone here and kind of bring our community together. We've kind of been inching over there in the last couple of years and gotten acquainted with several of you, but we've had a blast, so we welcome you to our community and hope to see more of each other and our Roadrunners. Thank you.
Buddy.
Welcome everyone, it's good to see everybody here. Good luck in your appropriate sports as well as your academics this year.
And brings us to item number five, Presentations, Commendations, and Announcements. 5.1, Proclamation, Birds Up for UTSA. A proclamation here, I'm going to read it and then we'll present it to the A.D. Whereas the mission of the University of Texas of San Antonio Athletics Department is to provide an environment in which student athletes can be successful academically, athletically, and socially, and whereas athletics plays a vital role in uniting our community, fostering pride, and connecting students, alumni, and fans, and whereas Chavano Park recognizes the outstanding achievements of UTSA's athletes, coaches, and staff, and whereas the City of Chavano Park supports UTSA Athletics Department's commitment to the focus on excellence, integrity, and unity, aiming to transform lives by developing champions in the classroom, in competition, and in life, and whereas the University of Texas of San Antonio and the City of Chavano Park both share a deep commitment to excellence as well as the Roadrunner as a mascot, and whereas the City of Chavano Park wishes to celebrate the success of its fellow Roadrunners. Now therefore, I, Robert Werner, Mayor of the City of Chavano Park, on behalf of the entire City Council and citizenry hereby proclaim August 26, 2024 as Birds Up Day for UTSA and the City of Chavano Park, Texas. Let's all step forward and we're going to take a picture with the A.D. Come on down.
Come on Maggie.
We're out again. Cheerleaders, y'all need to come through. Come on the dice. All right, don't be shy. Come on up. Rowdy, jump up in there. Y'all come in tight, jump in and over. Come on in and we'll try to turn together. Is that everybody? All right, Maggie. Oh, come on, got it for us? Yep. If I could move between, like between the two of us, click a minute. All right, if you jump in, go in between like these two ladies here. I'll make this play, just go in between them two. Yeah, there you go. I heard this side. All right, here we go. All right, count three birds up. One, two, three, give me some applause, come on. Hold that right there, hold on. Okay, here we go. I wish, wish that was a problem. Hold on. One more. Hold on. Oh, the glass. There you go. Thank you so much. We want to share a few words, but if you would care to share anything with the citizens?
Absolutely. You cannot hear from a period of minutes. Right there.
you so much. We are so humbled for you to recognize the achievements and the great things that all of our student athletes do for our community, and we welcome you all to be a part of the Roadrunner family. We're so happy that we have this connection, we look forward to seeing you at all of the competitions and supporting our student athletes. But beyond that, as someone had mentioned, you know, we're really proud that our student athletes have an 89% graduation success rate, and this means that our students are very serious about not just their athletics, but their, what they're going to do in life. And we hope you all can serve as mentors and be connectors for all of our students. So, thank you so much, we're so humbled and so appreciative of today. Birds up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Cheerleaders, please be sure to get your cookies on the way out. Right over there.
Take all the cookies, all the cookies, take them back to your friends and your enemies. They're from Chavano Park. Please.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Brenda, do we have a big box we can put the cookies in? Where's Brenda?
I think.
There what? Okay, while the room is clearing out, I want to extend a word of appreciation to Gay Miller and to Pete Miller who are responsible for making sure that all of this happened. Pete, thank you on behalf of all the members of the community and City Council for getting this together, getting us our shirts, getting the food for the athletes and for the cheer squad and everyone who's been here tonight, thank you very much. Gay, I know that none of this would have happened but for you. We appreciate everything that you do through the Women's Club and through other city activities. Brings us to item number six, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussions of these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do we have a motion to approve items 6.1 through 6 points, approve and/or accept items 6.1 through 6.8?
I'll move.
We have a motion from Lee, we have a second from Pete. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries, brings us to item number seven, All Matters Listed Under This Item Are Considered Routine by the City Council and Will Only Be Considered at the Request of One or More Alderman. Coincident with each listed item, a discussion will generally occur at the end of the regular agenda. Does anybody want to pull any of items 6.7 through, I mean 7.1 through 7.6? There being no requests, brings us to item number eight, Regular Agenda Items. Discussion 8.1, Discussion Action, Consideration and Approve the Resolution R 2024-011 of the City of Chavano Park. City Council accepting the filing of a landowner petition requesting the creation of the Chavano Park 1604 Public Improvement District. Finding the petition to be compliant with applicable laws, calling a public hearing to consider the creation of the Public Improvement District, authorizing and directing the notice of the public hearing and giving the same as required by law, providing for an immediate effective date, and resolving other matters in connection therewith. Bill and David, and I imagine Patrick as well. Bill.
And Caroline.
And Caroline.
Let me start off, and what we're going to do is, we're going to go through a couple overview slides. Curtis and I tag teamed this. Just to remind you, we discussed a Public Improvement District at the last City Council meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, and then we got briefed on what a PIT is, a Public Information District is, and how it might be applied to the 22-plus acres along 1604. And with us today is David Wright from Bitter Blue, Attorney Caroline, and as well as Patrick who presented last week. So, we've got subject matter experts from the property owner who is petitioning for this PIT. And so, I'll go to the first slide, I'll tag team with, and what we're going to do is, we're going to kind of brief it basically, and then if you have questions, you can ask the subject matter experts back here. Curtis.
Yes, so this proposed PIT is only for the 22 acres. It is along Loop 1604 and Pond Hill heading west there. It will provide for approximately 13 acres of commercial development, it's a mixture of retail and hospitality, again, this is all pre-planned, as well as potentially 30 to 40 townhomes. In total, it's predicted that this, and the petition is for 6 million, but the actual investment, public investment is 4.5 million. And it's important to emphasize that this action before the City Council tonight is just to accept the petition and schedule the public hearing. The reason for the change from 4.5 million to 6 million is, of course, these investments are going to happen in the future, there are unknowns, and the attorneys have explained to us that this is a hard cap on the amount that they could issue a bond debt. And they didn't want to run into a situation, right, where you could be slightly over 4.5 million because of any number of economic conditions or construction industry, and you'd be unable to issue the bond. So, that's for that small change, but still the financial analysis that's in your packet is still accurate for that. And of course, these, in addition to the predicted ad valorem created by the property and tax revenues, there would be sales tax revenues potentially generated by these retail sites. So, again, tonight is just the PIT petition, and then it is potentially, if it is accepted by City Council, a public hearing to be scheduled for September 16th. There would be the PIT's actual creation by resolution, and then at a later date, there'd be the, of course, the levying assessments issuing the bonds, but that wouldn't be happening in either September meeting, that's far out. That concludes my presentation.
And then associated with this will be, we received last week a request for rezoning for this 22 acres, which is currently Zone B2, and then it would be then modified if, as we consider this, for a mixed-use development. So, that will go before the Planning and Zoning Commission the first week of September. Concurrent with this, there will be other documents such as replating, there will be a professional development agreement that's done because a PIT will require an administrator, and then there's attorneys and there's consultants on both sides that have to be working through. There is also potentially a development agreement, although we haven't fleshed out what that's going to be. We have contacted our bond attorney, and fortunately, you might remember Stephanie, and she is very attuned to this, she's worked actually with Patrick and the team and Caroline here before, so they're in sync, and they've prepared most of the documents for the mayor's signature from here. So, we have the detailed slides that we presented to you last time in backup, if you needed to refer to any of those slides, we can. Otherwise, I will pause there. You are welcome to ask questions of staff, but primarily the folks that really know what's going on or behind us.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve, for the City Council to approve Resolution R 2024-011, accepting the filing of a landowner petition requesting the citation of the creation of the Chavano Park 1604 Public Improvement District, finding the petition to be compliant with applicable laws, calling a public hearing on September 16th, 2024, to consider the creation of the Public Improvement District, authorizing and directing that notice of the public hearing be given as required by law. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Buddy has made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Maggie. We're now open for discussion. Maggie.
I have a question. I think on the townhomes, they're looking at like putting up about 20 if I remember?
30 to 40.
30 or 40. And what I was reading is that San Antonio was way behind on putting up townhomes and the usage of them. Would that endanger our little city if somehow these townhomes don't go well in the, on sales?
Yeah, David, would you come forward and talk about y'all's vision for, or Patrick, talk about the vision for townhomes, the, where the price point looks like it's going to be, where y'all have been in other townhomes in this area, if you'd come up to the lectern?
Yeah, I'm happy to address that. So, as I mentioned, we are looking, you know, just over 30 townhomes that we're looking on this side, mentioned 30 to 40, we're still finalizing that number there. The estimated sales price for these townhomes is currently estimated around a million dollars, so we're looking for higher, we're looking at a higher-end townhome product that we're providing. If you can scroll forward actually, in the presentation that we provided last time. Let's see here. We, go to the next slide right there. Here's kind of a rendering of some of the types of townhomes that we're envisioning for the project. This was another project that had been done by the developer in the region, so we wanted to kind of show this. We don't have renderings yet for this project, we're still going through the initial planning and design phases for that, so we wanted to give you an example of some of the other work that had been done. This is the Quarry Heights Villas, and this is showing them actually under construction. So, a similar type of condo, townhome product that you're seeing here.
Okay, Maggie?
So, you feel like there's going to be a hot market for them?
I would have to defer to the developer regarding the market studies that are prepared, but generally, yes, their feeling is in including this is that there is demand, otherwise we wouldn't be putting it in right now.
Okay.
And when we asked Laddie that, when staff asked Laddie that, he basically said, just take a look at Pond Hill Villas 2, they've all sold, the last one sold for over $750,000.
Wow, okay.
So, he's pretty confident that this concept, especially in this location, is something that is not being offered anywhere else, and there will be a demand.
Okay.
From the city's standpoint, we're not taking the risk, the developer is.
But the community will if they're left vacant.
Yes.
That's my concern.
Lee?
This slide, Bitter Blue Inc., this Quarry Heights, where is that located?
Hi. Caroline McDonald, good afternoon, this is actually located on the rim of the Quarry Golf Course.
Oh, San Antonio, okay.
Yes, yes, so under construction.
This is an old slide, so I assume they're all built.
They are currently under construction, it's a little bit more challenging.
How many of them are already sold?
David, do you know?
Close percentage, I'm not going to hold your feet to the fire.
I would say close to 90% if, you know.
Okay, that's the answer.
Okay, Pete.
So, Patrick, the purpose of the PIT is to actually pay for the infrastructure that would be going in. So, can you tell us, has the hospitality center been locked in, has the resident, or the retail been locked in? Because the infrastructure that you would need for different types of facilities would vary depending upon what was planned to go there, is that a fair statement?
I think that's probably a fair, that's a fair statement there. What we did is, the engineer put together the plans and the designs of what would be needed for this site to provide services for the users that they're looking at, and so that's where we put together our estimates and kind of put together the PIT projections in order to cover those costs. As was mentioned, these are still preliminary estimates, right? And in this case, the PIT, we would be issuing those bonds after those, after the construction has already been incurred. So, at that point in time, we can guarantee and ensure that sufficient services and sufficient capacity is there for those land uses as they're under contract.
Okay, but I guess my question is, is as you look at like the hospitality plans that are being planned, is that relatively far along where you're sure that that's what that site would be designed for, correct?
I will have to defer to the, to Caroline or the builder for that.
There is significant interest, and there are several conversations going on with the national chain for a hotel, I can say that.
Okay. Because it, you know, when you look at the infrastructure, the requirements for water for a hotel, they're a lot different than that for a retail type.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, there being no further discussion, no other questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you very much, Patrick.
Thank you.
Caroline, David, appreciate it. Okay, it is now 7:01, item 8.2, Public Hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive comments from the members of the public on proposed amendments to the Loop 1604 Urban Corridor Sign Plan to allow limited digital billboard signage and setting forth terms and conditions relating to said signage. Bill.
What we're going to do is, Curtis is going to tag team this with me, he's going to give the presentation on the signs, then I'm going to work the 8-3. So, Curtis.
Mr. Fitzpatrick, would you like to speak now or have me go first?
I think he'd probably rather, you have your presentation and then he will have, then we will take questions and comments from the audience after you've finished your presentation.
Yes, Mayor. All right. Before I go, launch of the background, I thought it'd be prudent to just look at the purpose of the Urban Sign Corridor Chapter, and that reads, "Within the city's jurisdiction, there are many roadway corridors that have been or will continue to be very significant to the city. These corridors are amenities and assets of great value to the city, its inhabitants, and the economy. The City Council aims to preserve, enhance, and perpetuate the value of these roadway corridors, and hereby authorize the establishment of urban corridors." So, this proposed ordinance that's in front of you this evening would propose allowing the construction of three digital billboard signs along Loop 1604 frontage under the existing Loop 1604 Urban Sign Corridor Plan. Three sites would be controlled by the city via a lease and could become great assets of great value to the city and the businesses along Loop 1604. And of course, you know this, but I will emphasize for the public, the city staff has worked diligently with legal counsel to protect the city's interests and assure that these digital billboards are a success and enhances the value of the Loop 1604 Sign Corridor. So, the background of the actual ordinance for you. So, in November 2013, Chavano, the city created the Urban Sign Corridor Ordinance, which is Sabbath 2, which is Loop 1604 and La Calzama. We're just talking about the Loop 1604. In February 2014, the ordinance that's in your packet, that created the Loop 1604 Urban Sign Corridor. And there, there's a map, it placed out where these multi, these multi-business pylon signs, you can see up on your slide, where they would be, and they had to meet city's branding. So, in the past decade, this ordinance has controlled the installation of these many multi-business pylon signs that exist on the roadway at the day. These large pylon signs, of course, are not normally allowed in our city's building code. These are, can be up to 60-foot tall, 680-foot sign area. But they had, but these signs had to be installed in certain locations, and they had to be designed capable of branding. This was instrumental in creating a Loop 1604 frontage where there's not covered in business signage, but instead has limited large signs that meet a consistent branding. So, the proposed locations for these three signs, this is a, the 2014 map here with the ABCs, and then we added a new green D where you can see here, and I know that it's a little difficult to see, so we'll zoom in on each of these locations of where would these signs be. So, the first location here, this is near, you got Pond Hill, Northwest Military there, we are near the undeveloped tract that's north of Pond Hill, Garden Villas Unit 2. This sign would be 436 feet from an existing pole sign under, from another plan, near the Lynn Building, 160 feet from any possible sign under this plan. So, it meets all the distance requirements. And that lot with the, just I'll add, that lot that has the pond and then access to 1604 there, you can see, that is a flood plain and not be developed, there's a significant amount of water that runs right in here. So, this will be undeveloped. The second location here, we are moving from west to east, so here we're at the Pizanas Parkway, the Pizanas Restaurant is right here, and this is the 22 acres that we just got discussing the previous agenda item, this is the very tip corner of here along Loop 1604, the Greater San Antonio Builders Association Building is right here. This is 1,200 feet from an existing pole sign near Huntington Square, and 170 feet from any possible sign, give you the idea of the distance between how far it'd be. Last location, we're continuing to move west, now we're in the north, or sorry, northeastern corner of the city. We have Napier Park Development in here, this is an old exhibit, a lot of these lots have been built out now if you drive in there, and this is the very tip corner here along Loop 1604 here, we're so along 1604. This is 700, this would be 770 feet away from the nearest existing pole sign at the entrance of Pond Hill, and 500 feet from any possible sign. So, this ordinance, in addition to the locations, there were going to have other requirements for these companies right now. The city has issued a request for proposals, we had a pre-bid meeting, and we have had a number of questions that we're getting ready to answer. But in this RFP, in this sublease, and in this sign ordinance plan, there are some basic requirements here. The maximum sign height will be 60 feet, and maximum sign area 680 feet, which is consistent with the current limitations for signs along Loop 1604 today. These are not going to be bigger than the existing pole, pylon signs. They have to have LEDs with light blocking technology, which I'll get into that with some examples in a little bit. Automatic brightness adjustment for ambient lighting, internal service access, they can have no visible catwalks, they can comply with all applicable city building codes, they have to have engineered foundations, anchoring mechanisms, and all signs that comply with city ordinances, and that would include things like dark sky. That would include, you know, the city is a certified city from TxDOT to regulate the federal agreement, so it's a number of different ordinances in there, they would have to comply with all those. So, this, the light blocking technology, so this is an exhibit showing how this technology works in that you can direct the light just to where you want to along the viewing areas with a small transition area and then otherwise protected. I do have a video here, if you give me a second, I think seeing this technology in effect really helps. So, this is from a company that does this technology. You see now we're in the transition zone as the drone moves, now we're in the, they call it a terminally protected region. And so, we're going to require that the companies utilize this type of technology in these signs so that for the businesses and property owners that are, that the sign is there, they're not going to have a constant bright shining light hitting them, but of course, for the design, for the target audience, of course, the businesses on that sign can reach the people along.
What are you looking at? Flickering white dots of all.
All right, then this is a rendering of what, possibly what a sign could look like with city branding. You have, in this little mock-up, you have the Roadrunner underneath the sign with the, again, 60-foot tall, 680 square foot from the roadway. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Curtis. We're now open for questions from the audience, do we have any questions from the audience? Sean? Sean?
So, I apologize, but this is the only way I'm gonna be able to do this in three minutes. There are twenty-six miles of sixteen oh four frontage along, from two eighty-one to Bandera Road. And only one mile of that is in the city of Chavano Park. There are eleven legacy billboards, uh, in that, in that entire distance. That's one every two and a third miles on average. And this proposal that we're gonna do is gonna put three of them in our single mile. The billboards aren't there and they're not coming. And the reason why is because ironically, the city of San Antonio, our big urban boogeyman, uh, takes its view shed seriously and prevents visual clutter better than we do. Um, and if you see a sign on a road like this, along a place like the Katy Freeway or the, uh, North Dallas Toll Road, um, near places like ours, places like, I don't know, Hillshire, Hillshire Village, um, Highland Park, University Park, Bel Air, even Frisco, which is really not like us because they're so much bigger. Um, the signs you're gonna see are not inside those places' city limits. Electronic billboards right now violate our zoning. I've heard only one argument that I think is persuasive, uh, from the city's point of view, uh, in favor of them, and that's that it's gonna, they're gonna bring revenue to the city. And it's true, the town plan places importance on developing new revenue sources. But it also, um, tells you that image and aesthetics are paramount here. And it requires the maintenance of strict restrictions on business signage. The revenue argument, so i- in my opinion, makes sense, but it only makes sense if you ignore everything else. And I'm gonna give you six reasons why I think that's true. First is really the revenue is insignificant. Secondly, it excuses you from making, um, responsible decisions about spending. If you have more money to spend, you can spend more freely. Uh, and if the city really needs, uh, the money so badly that this, um, deal looks good, you have to kinda ask how we got here in the first place. But the argument is also a monster that kinda destroys everything in its path. Um, what wouldn't be justified in the name of raising revenue for the city? I mean, could, could you rezone some residential along Northwest Military, open up a pawn shop as long as the city gets to share in the revenue? I don't know. Could you, uh, let the Catholic charities use the, uh, church property to run a refugee center? Well, um, I don't know. I mean, what if they gave you half million dollars a year to do it? The revenue argument, well, let me, let me back up. Those two examples, to choose to not do those things, you'd have to be convinced by the same arguments that are being made, uh, against doing this thing. And, and at least with the Catholic charities' argument, it has a much stronger, uh, uh, moral weight to it. And that would be the one that you guys would be the least, uh, likely to actually approve. My fifth point is that the deal exposes the city to, uh, spot zoning claims by everyone else who wants to sign. Didn't get one in this deal. And finally, I think the revenue ar- argument kinda perverts the relationship between the city and city government. So government is supposed to serve the city by protecting the city's amenities and assets to enhance the quality of life of the residents. And sign zoning ordinances do that. That's, that's part of the city's package. And you can't look at, at these assets and amenities as assets that the city government can sell off in its own service. And that's what this scheme will do. It's gonna sell off an aesthetic quality of life zoning restriction. That's a city asset worth preserving, the town plan says so, and uses the word strictly when it tells you to do that. Um, and, and yeah, maybe you could provide other amenities with the, uh, with the revenue that you get off of this, but that's kinda like cutting off your finger and selling it for money to buy a new ring. So I think that this is a bad idea. I think that the signs are gonna be an eyesore regardless of, of everything else that we do to try to make them not be so. And, and I, I really think that it's more consistent with, um, the city of Chavano Park to not do this rather than to do it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sean. Are there any other citizens to be heard? If there are no other citizens to be heard, it is now seven fifteen. We will call the public hearing portion of this meeting to a close. Brings us to item number eight point three, discussion action, update to potential billboard signage action and consideration of ordinance O twenty twenty-four zero zero seven, amending the Loop sixteen oh four urban corridor plans, sign plan to allow limited digital billboard signage and setting forth terms and conditions relating to said signage. This would be a first reading of this ordinance. Bill?
So, um, I've talked to you all and told you that, uh, we presented this to planning and zoning and they voted to disapprove the sign plan. Uh, they are required to give you a recommendation for consideration. And what's before you tonight is a first reading of an ordinance. And I'm gonna show you that there is a, a way ahead, a path ahead that will allow you almost two months of consideration before you actually finalize and approve this. Let's go to the first slide. So this is fairly complex. Um, and you've probably seen that in some of the materials before. We've been briefing you off and on for about a, a year, year and a half. And as part of that, a few months ago, we, we, uh, brought to you a draft memorandum of understanding, which is non-binding, that was between Bitter Blue, who represents the Rogers family, and the city of Chavano Park. Uh, we showed you a draft which was, uh, conceptually pretty, uh, pretty good, but not finalized. And we worked very hard between, um, our attorneys and Bitter Blue and their attorneys to get this to where it was a document which outlined conceptually the way forward. Uh, the, the way forward included, um, setting up basic easements, there are gonna be initial construction easements to allow utilities to get in there. First of all, we have to confirm that it's feasible because all three of these sites have not been developed. That work is ongoing. The second thing is we had to come to agreement with Bitter Blue conceptually on a lease term. And as we brief you, we took a long, because of the concern, concerns that we all have, including the planning and zoning, we wanna make sure that if we enter into this agreement, that it's not gonna be something that's a, a one in twenty-five years and then we, we don't have control over that. So we worked a, uh, a concept for essentially a ninety-nine year lease. It starts out as a twenty-five year lease and then it, um, and then it rolls over as an evergreen clause for one year at a time all the way to ninety-nine years. So there will always be twenty-five years of, uh, forward, um, city control until there's a disagreement and that is, um, voided, and then there's a twenty-five year period later. We've come to agreement of the basic terms of the lease. We're still in final draft and our attorneys are, are negotiating some of the fine tuned stuff, but the, the major muscle moves, we're in agreement. So that was an important piece to this. And then with the sublease, we're, um, potentially going to enter into a sublease with a sign company. And, uh, that signed lease would be for only twenty-five years. And so that, that at the end of that twenty-five years, we could go out for bid again and pull in other sign companies and, and competitions associated with that. And that protects both the Rogers family and, and the Bitter Blue organi-, you know, overwatching them as well as the city. And we have a basic agreement on that sublease. We also, um, drafted up a request for proposal, staff through the attorneys pretty significantly. And once we got into the memorandum of agreement being signed, the basic agreements for these leases and the easements have been worked out, we released the RFP. Because right now, we're conceptually talking about, hey, there's an offer on the table for signs, but we don't know what the final offer's going to be, we don't know what the final income's gonna be. And, um, there is two sides to this, uh, to this agreement. I mean, there, there, there are those people that don't like billboards. A lot of people don't like billboards. And so ultimately, uh, you have, we have to weigh where those billboards are and what it may or may not do to extract, distract from the city. And, and weigh that with, with the income, uh, stream that potentially will come. And, uh, that proposal, we went out for bid for that so that we get proposals and we can evaluate that and then we can go to the rest of the story. Now, we know that we're pretty, uh, you know, there's some preliminary numbers talk about well over two hundred thousand dollars a year for twenty-five with escalating clauses of, of a certain percentage every year or every five years. And so it's a pretty substantial amount. But the exact specifics of that, we will get, you know, next month at some point in time. So again, five things going on at once. One's been executed, which just outlines that there's still a lot of things left to do here. Next slide. What, and this is what I really wanna, uh, bear down to you on, is what's the timeline look like? So this is an ordinance and the ordinance simply amends the sign plan. It doesn't amend the signed ordinance. The signed ordinance establishes that you can establish a plan and it can be approved as a plan. And you could have specific locations and sizes and all the specifics associated with that. So just the, uh, top three things in green. We've reached consensus, not final consensus, but on the draft, uh, RFP, the lease and the sublease. We have signed and executed the memorandum of understanding, which is non-binding. It doesn't require, it doesn't say that each party will or will not do this. We've released the request for public, uh, for, uh, for, uh, proposals, and I believe that was on the eighth of September, uh, eighth of, not, ninth of August. Thirty days, we will have received these proposals, that'll be eighth September. You know, the next meeting is the ninth of September, then you have a meeting on the sixteenth of September. We are not trying to jam this through in September. We are going to take plenty of time to take these proposals and provide them to Bitter Blue and to the Rogers family for their considerations. They'll provide input to us. We are the sole selection, um, authority for it, but we want to receive their input because they're partners in this potentially. And that input from the, uh, from Bitter Blue would be on by September thirtieth. And we would have that information. There may be some workshops, some other meetings where we're passing this information to city council. The final proposal and what staff would do in terms of laying all this out would be like we normally do, one week prior to a city council meeting, that would be October twenty-first. We would present, uh, the terms of both the sign bid proposal, the lease agreement, the sublease agreement, and the second reading of the urban corridor sign plan for approval. So what I'm suggesting to you is tonight is the first reading, and this is August, August twenty-sixth. And there's still a month and a half, almost two months, actually two months to consider this. And so the idea is, do not, you know, final approval wouldn't occur unless all four of those were approved at the same time. They'll either all four be disapproved at the same time or all four approved at the same time. Plenty of time to get input and feedback and questions and we can work through that. Now, if approved on the, on October twenty-eighth, we would notify the winning bid only at that point in time. And then the first task would be to enter into the lease agreement with the city. Once we have an, uh, an executed lease agreement, then we would go into the final negotiations for a sublease agreement with a, a potential sign company. And then, um, we put a milestone out, though those aren't not, uh, drop dead dates, but those are target dates for us so that we would have a, um, a, a potential agreement in, in, uh, in November. Do I have a next slide? Okay. So this is another flow chart. I'm not going to sit there and tell you that, that, uh, the signs are tied to the pit or the twenty-two acres, but they are related because we've got one sign on there and I, I'm sure that's part of Bitter Blue's, uh, plan. But in the blue, starting from the top right, we've released the RFP for bi-, for, uh, billboards. We will receive the submittals on the ninth of September. We will receive Bitter Blue's input on the thirtieth of September. And I just mentioned to you, on the twenty-sixth, city council will consider the RFP bids, the lease, the easements, the sublease, and do the final reading of the urban sign plan. And then we would execute the lease and then the sublease. Target for site work and engineering would be twenty twenty-five. Just as, is, that's what we're talking about. In the yellow, on the seventh of August, P and Z considered this. They provided a recommendation for the, uh, the Loop si-, uh, Loop sixteen oh four sign plan amendments. You are, uh, voting on it first reading, um, here. And it's, um, at the same time, you've just received a pit petition. We've received a re, uh, rezoning request for that. And those zoning actions and pit actions are parallel, they're not dependent upon this, but there are a parallel, um, piece in the concept of the development of that twenty-two acres. Um, is that the last slide I have? Okay. So again, I'm gonna pause from there. I will say, I was prepared to talk about the non-concurrents of, of, uh, planning and zoning. Commissioner Fitzpatrick did an excellent job of summarizing the points that he made before. So I don't think I have to rehash that from that standpoint. There are some things I might say as into, the town plan does have, as the number two item, maintain strict, uh, science standards. It doesn't say restrict signage, limit signage, but it says ma- maintain strict signage. You can interpret that a number of ways. I could argue that it says limit, but you know, if you're reading it by the law, whatever signs we have, we want to have strict sign standards. Um, the revenue piece, which is part of the equation to be determined, um, relative to the future. You know, there's a number of revenue streams that altogether come collectively. And we know that even this year, um, getting to where we wanted to do on the budget, um, was a little bit challenging and it's gonna continue to get challenging as we get built out. And that's all, I will, I'll pause there and answer any questions and we'll go from there.
Okay. Uh, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance O twenty twenty-four zero zero seven, amending the Loop sixteen oh four urban corridor sign plan to allow limited digital billboard signage and setting forth terms and conditions relating to said signage as a first reading. With the plan's second reading, uh, to be at the regular October twenty twenty-four meeting after the RFP bids are received and further evaluations by city council is completed. Do I have a motion? Conrad?
Make a motion to do this. I have, I do have a, would like to take a look at that contract and understand that thoroughly. Um, I think that's obviously the most important piece and that's what's gonna tie us up here. So more discussion on that, but I would like to approve it.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Maggie. We're now open for discussion. Pete?
So, so Bill, what I'm hearing from you is we currently don't have a full picture. You, we don't have all the pieces to fully evaluate this. Is that a fair statement? We, we haven't received the, the bids in yet.
We haven't received the bids. Uh, we've been working pretty closely with LADDY in terms of what it's going to look like. It's going to be a corridor pole sign.
Right.
We, uh, highly anticipate that we will have the, uh, Chavano Park, um, imaging on it. The roadrunners similar to the current coal plants there. We know the light technology, you know, what we showed you there is a, almost a, it's going to be very, very, very close replica because there's only so many things you can do. And, um,
But the revenue side, we don't have a full picture of.
We don't have a full picture. I can tell you that public information, we know what other, um, cities are getting and other parts of contracts. There was an initial offer made to us before we went into the lease, sublease piece, which was pretty lucrative. And so, you know, we're hoping to at least match that, if not, you know, greater, but we'll see what happens. But yes. But yes.
So, so I, I don't take lightly the, the concerns that P&amp;Z has, but I also understand that, that in order to really fully evaluate this, that you really need all the pieces. And so by approving this tonight, we don't approve the, the signs. What we approve is the ability to fully evaluate what we've got on the table. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, because we set up our ordinances for two readings that allows a first approval, but it doesn't actually get approved and finalized until the second one.
Yeah. And, and just to note, as far as Conrad's motion, this will not come up in September the way that he has made the motion, which would be when we would normally have had a second reading. This gives us an extra four weeks from when we would normally have discussed this. Okay? Pete?
So, so at the P&amp;Z meeting when we had this, there was obviously a lot of discussion. It was a, a four to four vote, is that correct? And then a tiebreaker from the chair. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, so there's, there's concerns on, on both sides about what, what this might look like and, and there are some valid concerns. One of the things, as we kind of move forward, you know, one of the things I, I always like is, is I think the more people that you, that can help explain and understand this and looking at all the pieces, especially because we're talking about something that's a 25-year commitment. And, and to be able to understand and fully evaluate this, takes some time. I mean, this is a complicated issue. You, you've been working it multiple years? Is that fair?
There's been, yes, but not actively, not, not like leaning forward and getting in front of the council. I've been approached for five, seven years and I, I pushed back until the point where we brought it to council, do we even want to consider this?
All right.
Okay. Buddy?
Is it fair to say, Bill, that we have the proper equipment fire wise to handle these types of signs? Do we need anything else? I mean, will our current infrastructure handle 60 feet tall signs, being that they're electronic?
Well, I haven't thought of that in terms of the fire piece. Chief May come on here. We do have 60-foot signs. They're just more vertical. You know, one of the, one of the points is, well, we already have a lot of big signs and they are unique Chavano Park looking signs. They, they look nicer than most big signs, but they are big signs. And so relatively speaking, the difference is that those are on-premise signs. They're basically advertising on-premise buildings, businesses, and this would be off-premise signs. And so you're, you would have, you know, you would have different advertisements. That was one of the concerns and, and such that the content, we don't control the content or what if they put inappropriate content. Now, in the request for proposal, we put a clause in there that asked them to talk about how that would be managed and how we might have an influence.
And, and true, that was another question that was going to come up, but I understand the Texas penal code, the way it's written on obscene footage or pornography or any kind of obscene gestures or anything in video is protected by the state of Texas under those penal codes. Is that correct?
That's true. And we also have prohibition against certain kinds of stuff, you know. I'm pretty sure that we, I'm not guaranteeing anything, that we can write into a sublease contract some general guidelines, you know, and we can't tell them what to do and what they can't do. I mean, it can't be content based.
And Conrad bring up some very valid points on seeing the whole package. And I'm glad that you're saying that at any given point that, you know, we can pull this if it doesn't concur with what Chavano Park should look like. And I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Buddy. Conrad?
I'd like to explain myself a little bit on the thought of this, especially we have Sean here, the, and I appreciate very much P&amp;Z's vote and further exploration of this. I think it's really important. In my mind with this, as we've moved out to the, to the outskirts, the edge of the city, there are a lot of zoning changes that happen once we, when we get out there. And we currently have, what, 11 or so of those on-premise signs currently, something like that. There's a lot of signs out there already. So if you walk out there and you look left, you look right, you still see them. So I don't have the same vision of harm coming to the city by seeing three more, but I certainly understand the point. But I appreciate very much P&amp;Z's vote on this and bring us to explore this more.
Okay. Pete?
So Bill, in the past, when we've had complex issues like this come forward to the council, things like compensation and things like that, one of the things that we've done in the past is we've put a, a group together to, to really run it to ground, to, to make sure that we understand the arguments on both sides and then to be able to make a recommendation to council. Because this is a complex, I think it's a complex issue and it brings in a lot of different points. Would you see that as a potential way to, to move forward on this?
I'm going to be careful here. Some of the stuff that you, when you're dealing with a two or three-person subcommittee, you know, you're essentially assigning that and then you, whatever they come up with, you're implying that we're going to go with your recommendation. In this case, I mean, I really think that each council member ought to be in the know. And maybe instead of doing that, we had workshops or something like that where we brought all six of you in, brought the city attorney in, brought in other players there that you could ask questions. So it's going to be hard if, if, if you and Conrad are a subcommittee, you would be a fine subcommittee. But you're not going to be able to come back and then say, hey, Lee, here's what I heard and here's what I got and, and flesh it out in everyone's mind. Not everyone's going to have the same understanding. I think that because this is so complicated, I really think that you, just like we do in work, budget workshops, I think that you ought to, we ought to have a special meeting and we do it at a workshop. It's informal. You can gather around the table, ask pointed questions. We could really sit there and facilitate it and negotiate or, you know, and, and really be upfront about what your concerns are or not and flesh it out so that everyone's on the same playing field. That's just what my thoughts were.
Yeah. And, and of course, you know, Bill and I have the ability to call special meetings, whether they're called workshops or special meetings at any time. And frankly, this is like that souffle in the oven and it's not, we, we don't know what the right time to open the oven is yet. And so if we're going to do a workshop, which I think Bill made an excellent argument for why you would want to have a workshop, that we make that decision when it's time to pull the souffle out of the oven and not any earlier by saying, well, we're going to have the workshop on this day. Because frankly, if, if the bids came in and they truly disappointed everybody, there's no reason to have a workshop. If, if y'all are okay with that, I, you know, but please.
God, I actually like that idea. I think it's a good idea because we all need to have that understanding and it is a complex issue. I, I, I think, I think it's a great idea. I would also like to see several people from the P&amp;Z be part of that workshop as well.
Lee?
Again, again, an unusual question, I'm sure. Is there one of these things in existence within driving distance that I can go look at?
Yeah, there's one, I believe, right across from, right freetails.
Where?
By freetail. Right across from Chavano Park, from Starbucks.
Okay.
You, you, you won't even hardly, unless you know it, know it's an electrical sign, unless you happen to be watching it and then it turns. I mean, it's not like it's rotational stuff and it keeps, it rotates, but I don't know what the frequency is, but I actually had to be pointed out that that, there was a sign that, I thought it was a static sign and it's actually electronic. It's very difficult to tell the difference of these things. The beauty behind this is, you know-
Next question.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to-
My, my, my only other question, it did not occur to me until I was watching the little video of how it gets over into the zone and disappears. It's going to sound strange. Are these signs two-sided?
They're angled so that they're, yeah, they're, one's facing the east, one would be facing the west.
And they're only 60 feet tall? I mean-
60 feet from the, yeah, from the, yeah, 60 feet from the-
From grade, from grade.
From ground, from grade.
Not, not the ground, but from road grade.
The road grade from 1604.
Okay. I'm just going to have to see it to believe it. I'm, I'm sorry. It just doesn't, doesn't build in my head the way I thought it would.
Maggie, did you have a question?
I, just a comment. And I guess this will kind of unfurl as we go seeking further information, but I'm hearing different input on what the cost will be or how it will, how and if it will benefit the city of Chavano Park. I'm hearing a lot of different information.
Yeah. On the ninth of September, we will get the bids.
Okay.
I think that we call a workshop soon after that or we do it in one of, you know, conjunction, one of the, one of those meetings to brief you on what it is. We can all talk about that. And we'll get those numbers pretty quick. And I will just be, let me just, again, you could ask yourself, why is the city manager bringing this forward when we don't even have the bids? And it, part of it is, is to try to get the conditions laid for the sign companies to where they know at least we're serious about considering this. I mean, if you voted no right now, we might just take the RFP offline. But if we want to see what the results are, I think my recommendation is a, a, a yes vote for the first reading. That gives you flexibility in the second reading, but it gives a strong signal to those people that may be proposing, preparing a proposal that, that we're serious about considering this. And this is complicated.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, there are not being, be no other questions or comments. We have a motion to approve ordinance O-2024-007, amending the Loop 1604 urban corridor sign plan to allow limited digital billboard signage and setting forth terms and conditions relating to said signage as a first reading, with the plan's second reading at the regular October 2024 meeting after the RFP bids are received and further evaluation by city council is completed. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries 5-0. Brings us to item 8.4, discussion action approval of the parking options in the vicinity of city hall to include along Days of Allah. Bill and-
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to take this one. Next slide.
We briefed you on three options.
Option one is what we currently have, but it, there's no design, it's unmarked, but that's the basic footprint. It has 53 total parking spaces. We probably don't actually capture 53 most times because, you know, we're out there marking it with spray paint and people don't necessarily park it exactly. But we do have an option that if we wanted to formalize this into environmental friendly parking, we could take the current footprint that we try to follow and use that in this piece. But we know that we lost Northwest Military Highway. Crossing Northwest Military Highway is a little bit more problematic now and we're looking for options. So we came up with an option two and an option three. Option two is a, a little bigger and an option three. And just to kind of show you, what I did was, we've seen this slide before, but option, option two is the white outline and everything in it. And option, that's option two. And option three adds the yellow outline to it. And I'm going to talk about each one of those individually. And what I'm asking tonight is for council's approval. You've pretty much told me you want to go option two or three, but we need to finalize that because we need to finalize the plans associated with the Days of Allah project. We intend to use federal funding from the grant that we received to, to be able to, to make this a first-class, environmentally friendly parking lot. We're talking about, you know, pavers on the ground that aren't marked, it's not concrete, we grow grass in it or we do the best we can associate with that. Engineers have to present to you a plan that hasn't been planned. We've talked about it with the engineers twice. Didn't think I needed to have the engineer here tonight. Next slide. Here's option two just by itself. You've seen these, it's marked out there. It's hard to see, but if you haven't gone out there, you can go out and look at it. Next slide. As little as that is, there are, that, that creates 79 parking spaces. The 55 along Days of Allah is going to happen one way or the other. We're really talking about comparing the, the 50-something with the 79 and 63 trees will need to be removed. Most of those are small trees, but there are 63 trees that would have to be removed under this option. There may be some trail that has to be redirected. I think we may be able to avoid the walking bridge removed, but probably not. And part of the rain garden would have to be removed. Go to the next slide. This is option three, but I put the circles where the trees that were saved under option, option two, would have to be removed here. And this provides a significant amount of additional parking spaces. And so for orientation in the top center, you can see the edge of city hall where the police station is, right there, that outline that's in the top, kind of the top right of the, of the, of the slide. What you do see is you do see a number of, of trees that are still remaining along the outer perimeter of even this parking lot. But I, you know, if I can pull your attention to behind you, to the slide here, both options, most, all these trees go away. And there's a, a few more that are kept here, approximately 10 or 12 are kept here. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, and it's seven right here that, so that, that's, that's how I got to the, the additional trees there. But the vast majority would be removed under option two. And what you got to do is you got to look at, well, you've still got a couple of trees here around here. And so, yeah, it's an open area. Now, open areas can look nice. Trees look nice too. So I'm not, I'm not for removing trees, but I am for creating a safe environment. And, and I do believe that if you, if we stay with option one, which is just create the environmentally friendly one now, you're going to have, continue to have people parking all the way down the road. They'll be walking, they'll have a sidewalk they can access. It'll be a little bit safer, but you know, they're going to try to cut through this, you know, they're going to try to cut through here like they always do. And, and we can do some things to improve that. We'll have to redirect this trail. We can probably redirect it this way, right in here, it'll come back in. We'll lose a little bit of this trail right here. This is where we have the walking bridge, right here. So, you know, you could perhaps keep the walking bridge in option two, but you're probably going to have to remove the trail anyway, so why do you have a bridge that doesn't have a trail on it? So if I go to the next slide, this says about 22 additional trees would need to be removed. I went out there, I didn't count the 22, but that's, I'm just worst casing it there. And you've got a pretty significant number of additional parking spaces. So I, I don't know where we are on that. I mean, you don't absolutely have to make a decision tonight, but we've talked about it three or four times and maybe you already have in your mind what you want to do, as painful as it is.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, I think we're just going to open this up for general discussion. I don't think anyone's interested in option number one at all. And so we're, we're not going to talk about that at all. And, and so we're going to talk about options two and three and the benefits of the two. And I'm going to turn to Lee first. Lee?
Could you back up two slides, please? Okay. Last line, Southern Rain Garden may need to be relocated. Relocated where? Is relocated mean destroy? Last line, Southern Rain Garden may need to be relocated. Relocated where? Is relocated to be destroyed?
Well, no, I mean, the edge, about half of it, we just move, basically, you close off half of it and you just dig out a little bit further to the west.
You, you're gonna go and tear up other dirt to replace the dirt we're gonna pave.
Right, so that, you know, what current, what used to be there was just, it was, there was a rut, and then our public works went in there, and then they actually, with their machinery, dug it out and created what appears to be, you know, a rain garden.
Yeah, we, we can do this. Now, the other thing is this, this little bridge that we've got there, that goes over a water flow. Are we gonna have to put in some sort of piping to take care of the flow of water that we're not going to allow?
Engineers are gonna have to design it. They're gonna have to come to us with the, uh, with the stormwater runoff plan.
Yeah.
And, uh, the intent would be not to put a whole bunch of fill in there, but have to put some leveling in there. And the idea is that we don't want to over, um, overpower with gr- ground the existing trees that are there. The trees that are removed, you don't have to worry about, but the trees that stay there, you don't want to build up a significant amount, or you're gonna have to have a protective ring around it so that we're not...
Low though I am to spend money on other, other things, um, what with the reduction in the permeable, permeable surface that we're gonna have, sick, uh, military highways done that, and we're gonna be doing more of it on Days of Allah road. I'd really like somebody that understands water to let me know where this is going to take our increase of floodplain down to the, uh, bottom of that hill. Uh, it seems to me like we're putting more and more surfaces not as permeable as dirt.
That's what this is gonna be, though. It's gonna be dirt.
Oh, it, it will be dirt, but we're gonna be compacting with automobiles that will compact it, and that does cause a difference. Uh, I'm sure, I, I'd like going record right now. Option number two has got my vote. We've got to do something. Three is scalping the land, and I, I, I'm gonna go on record right now, I'm not gonna vote for anything but option two because that preserves as much as we can of our trees and tree city. Um, that, that'll be all I'll say.
Okay. Thank you very much, Lee. Maggie?
This is the bridge that we're talking about. Is this the one, and it's the last issue of the Road Runner, we commended the Boy Scouts?
No.
Good.
This is the one from three years ago that looks like an Aggie engineered it. And, and I'm saying that in the best possible way, but man, if we weren't getting rid of it, it's gonna be there longer than any of us are gonna be alive.
Well, I don't wanna hear anymore about that. Okay, so it's not the same one, 'cause I've only seen one bridge.
No, that's different bridge.
Different bridge. Okay.
Conrad?
Going back to Lee and option two, so we need more spaces at some point after that. Do we keep expanding the parking lot further to the west? Is that a possibility in later years then, to handle the traffic?
Well, you know, we, we, we own the tract across the street. Bill has been in negotiations periodically with nine-one-one about their lot, which would work well together. But, Bill, how many parking spaces is the difference between two and three?
Thirty-four?
Forty-three?
Well, it's ninety-two and, and twenty-six, uh...
Well, you got a hundred and thirty-four and a hundred and seventy-three.
So it's seventy-nine versus one, what, thirty-four?
So thirty-nine. Thirty-nine?
No, it's, it's more than that, Mayor. It's, uh...
Hundred and thirty-four and a hundred and seventy-three?
It's fifty-five, si- it's fifty-five additional ones.
So a fair amount.
Hundred and seventy, it says a hundred and seventy-three and a hundred and thirty-four.
Well, I'm counting ninety, ninety-two, what's ninety-two plus twenty-six?
Just says total. I'm just counting total. Total a hundred and seventy-three, and the other one says a to-
Forget about the fifty-five on Days of Allah, I think, right?
No, those should be, a total is a total.
Okay.
Ninety-two plus twenty-six plus fifty-five is one seventy-three. Seventy-nine plus one fifty-five is a hundred and thirty-four, so it's thirty-nine additional parking spaces. What, um, and Conrad and, and Kristen and I all agree, and we're gonna give that a guns-up today.
Because that's all you can do in West Texas is count. You can't do anything else.
We can count to two better than Aggies, because they can only count to one.
They're gonna put that in the matrix somewhere.
Okay, so, so Conrad, we're talking about thirty-nine parking spaces.
Yeah, so I think, you know, then plans need to be altered. I kind of agree with Lee. I think, you know, keeping some trees is nice. Those others are probably eight feet tall, they're more of a bush, you know? And they're never gonna get to grow up to be real trees, so not that concerned about the ones in the middle, but...
Let, let, let's go, can we go back and look at the, at the overlay of two and three? There we, okay, we can see these. Lee, are you at all concerned about the trees on the far west side? Those are all the scrub trees.
Mayor, are you talking about these right here?
Talking about those right there.
Yeah.
That's not many. That's one, two, three, four, five, six. Well, there may be a couple here. It's hard to tell.
But they're not under canopy. It's not like they're not gonna be able to grow. The perception in my mind is, is a number of trees we're knocking down for parking slots. And then I have to balance it against, when have we really run out of parking? Well, okay, we've run out of parking, especially since we don't have a curb out here. We can jump and park on military anymore with the completion of military. But the ones that we're gonna go down Days of Allah will take a lot of that strain off of it, plus option number two, as harsh as it is on trees, it's not as god-awful as option number three. And we can always go back and do option number three later. It's not like we're knocking ourselves out of doing it. I'd like to err on the side of keeping a few trees until we see how this works.
Yeah, the, the, the bigger trees are in that, the two center sections.
Right.
Right here.
The ones on the end add another seven parking spaces if you extend the parking lot a little bit farther, Lee.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's the difference in the number is ano- is another seven parking spaces.
Are you talking just about the left, or are you talking about all the yellow in that thing?
No, the yellow on the far left, only those.
Okay.
That's another seven parking spaces.
I like going nitpicky because we can leave the legacies in the middle.
We leave the legacies in the middle, and we leave the legacy at the opening as well.
So this would be, this would be option two point one?
Two point one.
Okay.
I think we could ask the engineers to come back and, uh, that's, I'm looking at that, that's, I, I, I'm not an engineer, but I can make that happen without messing with that.
Yeah.
And I might even be able to make a couple of those happen without messing with that. And then you protect, this is, this is a good clump of twelve trees there.
Yes.
And then that is a nice tree, tree there, so...
And, and maybe we've, now, now we've gone from we're losing thirty-nine parking spaces to we're losing twenty-five or twenty-seven. And it's much closer.
Well, this is the art of negotiation.
Yeah.
So, just to...
Oh, Conrad.
I'm sorry, I just wanna finish up. So my next question, is this three hundred thousand or is this five hundred thousand?
I'm sorry that I don't have that answer.
Well, this, this is, this is HUD money that we're talking about. That we're talking about HUD money here. This is, this is HUD money.
I don't think there's a huge cost difference between the two options, 'cause it, you know, just doing anything is gonna be, e- even option one to option two to option three, i- it's gonna be, you know, you're, you're using, you're talking about a different kind of building material and grading and doing a lot of stuff.
Okay. Pete?
Yeah, to me, I think it's important that we not lose sight of what we're trying to do. And what we're trying to do is the safety. It's the safety of our citizens that when we go to events, when they come to vote, uh, that they're not parking on the side of the road where they potentially could get hit. And to me, that's, that's the primary. Uh, secondary is to save trees. And I would like to see a good option where I want my cake and eat it, too. I, I want, I mean, 'cause you, you, you need at least probably two hundred or, at least a hundred and seventy, if not two hundred spots. And I'd, I'd like to see my cake and eat it, too. Save the trees and get more parking spots.
How would you do that?
Negotiate, uh, for the nine-one-one track. Okay, uh, so...
I'll come back with a two point three. Two point five.
So, so, the, um, you know, what Lee was sign if suggesting in the two point one uh, is something around a hundred and forty-eight parking spaces. Is that a number that we would find acceptable? And if it is, we can tell Chris to come back with a hundred and forty-eight, a hundred and fifty parking space solution. I know that, well, it's, uh, uh, it's basically ninety-two percent of what has been offered, eighty, uh, eighty-eight percent of what's being offered. Is that right?
When we have an event, what, what is the participation? How many cars do you think show up? Or potentially would show up?
Eighty-six, eighty-seven percent.
Well, I mean, we all know intuitively, if we had more parking spaces, more people would show up. And that those people that do show up, they do, and they fight for the parking spots. And sometimes if they really, really want to show up, they walk a long way. So, um, the demand's there. And then the question is, is how you b- balance that demand with the safety, with the aesthetics? And there's no easy solution, obviously. If we had one, we would present that, you know, there's the, the lot across the street, which at some point in time is probably gonna wo- work, but it's not the easiest thing. I, I think it's, you're years away from even considerations from bare met, but it's, it's possible, but you're a number of years away for that. That's the best solution.
And I think Bill is exactly right on the last part. You know, I, I think that if we had two hundred and twenty-five parking spaces for our community events, we would use two hundred and twenty-five parking spaces. That's not a hundred and seventy-three. If we had two hundred, we would use that as well. If we can get to a hundred and fifty, we're gonna use all of that. And if we chose the other option and got to a hundred and seventy-three, we would fully use that. Whatever number we choose, we will use it, and it, it's like, how big is this picture? And, and the problem is that the picture that we are pouring from has a, has a flow that until we get up to two hundred and fifty, three hundred parking spaces, we probably are short.
I would like to balance the, that, uh, each one of these vehicles that we're parking up to this nebulous three hundred with two and a half people per inside of it, won't fit in this building or outside. It'll be elbow to elbow, and you inhale when I exhale type of a crowd. So I think the crowd size will dictate car numbers.
Well, let's, let's talk about another thing. Uh, we have used our parking lot, this parking lot, the seventy-eight parking spaces out there, we have used that as our venue.
Right.
Is there a way for us to get away from using that as our venue and to move stuff onto our greenscape that already exists, just like we do for our Independence Day celebration? We have moved most of our, we've, other than our vendors, we have moved them off of the greenscape. I mean, we've used, moved them to greenscape. If we can figure out how to move our vendors into the pavilion exclusively, then we may be able to open up another fifty parking spaces, which gets to where Pete's concern was, let's accommodate as many people as we possibly can, but that goes into event planning as opposed to creating parking spaces. We already have these. Can we be more frugal in how we allocate our resources and get people off of the blackscape, the blacktop? I don't know. I'm asking.
I think the challenge with being on the grounds is that a lot of our residents are over sixty-five, and, you know, it's, you, you don't, you don't really want them maneuvering in there and, and trying to...
That's why we have the pavilion.
Right.
A- and as far as Independence Day celebration, we have the sidewalks going around. And to the extent that they can manage the sidewalks, they can be ambulatory. But at the point that they're getting out there and watching grandkids throw water balloons, they're in the grass, and there's nothing that we can do. There is no solution because we have decided this is how we do these events. When we do the carols and the tree lighting at the end of the evening, we have the sidewalks. Maybe those sidewalks need to be, instead of six-foot sidewalks or eight-foot sidewalks, maybe they need to be twelve-foot sidewalks. I don't know. But maybe those are part of the answer in how we get there to accommodate, because, Bill, you're exactly right. We're coming up in this, this year, by the end of this year, we will probably, this, the end of this fiscal year, the end of twenty twenty-five, we will probably see that over fifty percent of all of our households are headed by somebody sixty-five and over. You know, we want to be accessible for our largest demographic. But we also want to make sure that what we're doing works and that we can provide parking for those people because frankly, uh, if we're not putting them on the, on the hardscape, on the blacktop, we are not getting them in here, and we probably need to have signs that say parking age sixty-five and over to come into this parking lot. And then everybody else is pushed to the other parking lots, just so that we can accommodate those people that are older. Well, because I didn't want, I didn't want to embarrass Maggie. And Pete, and, and, and Lee, I'm not that far behind you, by the way.
But I have a comment.
Maggie, if you would.
Oh, yes. I went out at Willworthville and looked it over, and we, we pondered it, and I'm a tree person. I'm a green grow person, and I don't want to lose anything that we don't have to. And that went for the, for the little bridge. I thought it was cute. The thing that helped me visualize the loss is that I keep thinking that we're gonna be parking on concrete out there. It's gonna be that, that white flash. It's not gonna be, it's gonna be dirt or, or ground or, and maybe some uh, lines to designate proper spaces. Is that it, or is it gonna be more natural, the ground part of it?
Engineer was talking about you putting pervious...
Right, it has to be pervious.
Kind of materials that would be permanent, that would outline your parking spaces so that you could, um, you wouldn't have to paint, your public works wouldn't have to paint it each time. But if you looked at it, if you looked on the surface, it would look like a green field.
Yeah.
Now, it depends on how many times they run around it. I mean, we've, we've really worn it out recently.
Right, right, exactly.
Leon Valley has one of these. Uh, I don't think they paid for it. I think that they got money from the federal government to pay for theirs. But you walk out on it, it's like, I, I thought this was a playing field. And you could actually play on it if you wanted to, if you wanted to play frisbee golf or something like that. But, uh, it was, they kept it irrigated. It looked like a nice pasture that people were parking on periodically. And, and you walk on it, and suddenly you realize, huh, there are, there's a grid on here, and that's holding the gra- the dirt and the grass in place, and it looked lovely.
Still gives a softer look. It doesn't have the glare. It won't be as, uh...
It's not hot.
It's not hot, and it's, I don't think it's going to look as skinned as I thought it, the lot might be.
No, it'll be five times more soil than we currently have.
Exactly. No, I, I, that was so noted, but you gotta bring in a lot to level it off. And then you can't cover up the roots, or then they'll, the one we keep will die. So, uh, so there you are.
Okay. Okay, so, um, are we out on, you know, just a nod for Bill, are we on two? Are we on two point war one? Are, are we on three? So who wants to stay with two? Who wants to be on two point one?
Two point one is seven additional spots?
No, it's gonna be more than seven additional.
We'll have to come back to you on it.
It's prob- it's probably somewhere around twenty additional spots.
I like two point one.
Two point one or... Two-point-one or three? Two-point-one, Bill. It looks like we're on two-point-one.
I'll come with a plan. You'll have it on the, either the ninth or the sixteenth, and we'll, we'll look at it again.
Thank you, Bill. Okay. Eight-point-four, discussion action approval of, I'm sorry, eight-point-five. I was looking at the action agenda, sorry. Eight-point-five, discussion action approval, expanding of the scope of the Northwest Military Beautification Committee to include not only Northwest Military Drive, but also both Lock Hill Selma and Days of Allah roads. Pete, knowing, understanding that Maggie is actually a permanent member of this committee.
So what this would do is expand the scope of-
David, thank you.
Would expand the scope of a, a team or a group that we set what, over a year and a half ago in order to do this. So when you look at the main corridors that we do have, it's Northwest Military, Lock Hill Selma and Days of Allah. And so in order to be consistent in the way that we manage those and look at those, to me, it makes a lot of sense to expand the, the scope of the, the committee to where they're not only looking at Northwest Military, but to look at, at the other roads as well. And to me, you know, the uniform appearance of our city is important. I also believe that in, this enhances property values and it'll drive consistent maintenance on how we maintain those corridors.
Okay. Thank you very much, Pete. Do you have a motion? You, you get to do that at the end of your presentation.
Yep. So where's the motion? Yeah, so the motion is to approve the expanding of the scope of the committee established on September the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, to include not only Northwest Military, but also Lock Hill Selma and Days of Allah roads. Or, yep.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a second from Lee. We're now open for discussion. The, the discussion point that I would make is we have a lot of people that are invested in Northwest Military. Do we change the number of people around? Or do we just expand the size of the committee? And how are we going to set the parameters for the committee if we approve your motion?
So I, I think you do have most of their representative. It might be advantageous to add two more. One, another one from Bentley Manor. And potentially someone on, on Days of Allahs. Thoughts?
Bill?
I'm, I'm open.
Yeah.
Well, my general philosophy not to do with this is more, more in committees is not necessarily better, but I'm looking at the representation. You don't have anyone from the estates. The estates borders both Days of Allah and Northwest Military Highway. You know, Pond Hill, Willowood, you, you, you could actually enter into that without touching any of them.
Maybe someone from the estates.
Maybe just someone from the estates. And, you know, you, you take a look at, for example, Ryan Schultz. He lives in Chavano Creek, but he's been put on there, not because of where he lives, because of his expertise in landscaping. He owns a landscaping company. Since a, a lot of those folks there have a, a desire for landscaping or, or beautification, more so than where they live. I think they're pretty good representat, representatives of the city.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Anybody got any thoughts? Maggie? It's your committee.
I, I think we're okay with a committee unless we have someone from Bentley Manor that, you know, or on the Lock Hill Selma side. It has an interest in not those bushes.
Okay. Do you wanna go get somebody like Glenda Bibb? And do we wanna give Maggie the authority to expand the committee by one at her discretion? Okay, you have to make the motion, you have to amend your motion to do that.
So I'm gonna amend my motion to also include additional members as the chair sees fit.
Or as, as the permanent member sees fit. Okay, and, well, she's gonna choose one. Lee, do you consent to his amendment? Okay, okay, so we now have an amended motion. Do you wanna read your amended motion?
All right, so the, the motion is to approve expanding the scope of the committee established on September the twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, to include not only Northwest Military, but also Lock Hill Selma and Days of Allah road. And to allow the, the standing member of the chair to include additional member as needed.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. There being no further, just, no, Lee already did it, sorry. No, he was just restating his motion so that we could vote on it. We're ready to vote on it. There being a further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five-oh. Item eight-point-six, discussion action ordinance O twenty-twenty-four zero-zero-eight, amending the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four budget. This is a first reading. Bill and Brenda?
Yeah, I'm gonna start it off. Maybe I can get through it. Brenda put this whole thing together. But in general, what I would say is, there should be no surprises in here. All the things that we're amending, we've pretty much kept you abreast on. I wanna highlight a couple of quick things there. Attorney fees were significantly higher than budgeted because of a couple of our co-compliance cases that have gone to court and, and appeals, and appeals of those appeals. And so we're adding forty thousand for that. The crack ceiling machine went under, underwent some significant repairs this, this year. I think it was over five thousand, but I would point that out. We already talked about leasing additional water, so that's in the water piece. Brenda did a great job of, of highlighting all of these. We took pretty much interest income and other revenues, and we offset that. We'll still have some fund balance addition in there. But there should be no surprises. The other piece was, we estimated the street maintenance, you know, phase one cost. And they went faster than they thought, so we had to go ahead and replicate those costs based upon what we actually predict. Capital replacement funds. We expanded some items and replaced it in there. We already talked to you about using those funds to purchase the lot across the street and, and the ARPA funds. So I, I would just say that Brenda did a great job of, of laying it out. Most of this, you're already familiar with. If you have any specific questions, Brenda can answer them, or I can answer them.
Okay, thank you. Brenda, do you want anything before I entertain a motion? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance O twenty-twenty-four zero-zero-eight, amending the city of Chavano Park fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three budget as proposed in Exhibit A. This is an administrative ordinance, which means it will be enacted by one motion. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Pete. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Conrad. We're now open for discussion. There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries five-oh. Brings us to item number nine. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion from Maggie and a second from Lee. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries, we're adjourned.